Yeah, and that's just kinda the position that we have to, you know, take. But I think that, like I said, if you can get some load calculations from your architect, and then present them to us that we can share the.
Yeah, cuz I, I, I'll just not guaranteeing any answer. Truthfully, I have no problem with what you're proposing here, right? You have a bunch of non-conformity, you're in a non-conforming lot, we'll take care of all that stuff. But this is the biggest issue for me, and I'd rather have our engineers be comfortable.
Bless it, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Um, so I just come contact the architect back and.
I mean, we could probably connect her with Sean, right? Sure. Yeah, so you can call Deborah and maybe get our engineer's number or have your architect.
Okay.
Reach out to Deborah and that, that way they can have the conversation in their language and be able to get us the right information from you and for us.
Okay.
That way you don't do the sixteen different.
Yeah, cuz I, I was contacted, they told me to contact engineers, the only engineers, they came out. Uh, it's like, this is too small of a job, and it seems like nothing, um, they looked at the pipe, they said, hey, uh, you're reinforcing a concrete, like, what's the issue? And they all just, just dismissed me, like, hey, I'm not gonna take your money, like, this is, this is not.
Right.
If you were doing a building and you needed all this piping and all that, that's, that's a whole different ballgame. And he said, these are the, you know, um, so they were kinda just dismissing me, just like, hey, this is too small of a job.
It, it, it probably is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I was thinking about reviving the pipe cuz that would be easier for me, but when I looked at it, I have a huge boulder on the side of the house, and I can't go to this side because the house is already there. So the only side I can go is, is four to the left, but you have this humongous boulder which sits there and it doesn't, it's not feasible cuz I, I, I looked at it and I saw them digging up around.
And, and you can't put, uh, not suggesting you do this, but a, a larger dry well or something in there. I mean, get that much water that you need to come off that mountain? Yeah, on a heavy rain day, that's probably a lot.
I haven't seen it.
Yeah, I haven't seen it either.
Yeah, I go back there, it's, 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 it's a lot, it's, it's a lot, it's like, uh, it's swamp land, she, even my neighbors, these, uh, I was just speaking to them, that water is, is, is a lot, so when I looked at it and I saw the mountain border that was flooding.
Is she getting the water, too?
Yeah, the water goes in back of their property, it's, it's like all, it's like federal reserve land, it's like all, um, swamp land and when that water comes, it just over, it was just overtopping my, 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 my yard. They didn't really receive it because they sit higher, my house is the lowest house in that, in that crevice there. And I sit at the lowest point, so I didn't have any choice. Yeah. So that's why I went over and beyond.
Chris, if with the load calculations, how does that change the part about? I am obviously not an engineer, so loosening the soil, they said?
So, I mean, it's four feet deep, right, which means it's below for our requirements. It's, I would assume, and this is an assumption, that at four feet deep, it was put on virgin soil as a footing would be. The water is captured by the catch basin. So it's not like this is some sort of perforated pipe and water's gonna be kinda traveling through it and may erode underneath it as time goes on. It, it's being caught into a big drain and then run out. So the water is not getting in around the pipe and getting underneath the pipe and then getting an alternate means um, of egress, which I think was one of the things that they were concerned about, right? Water getting underneath the pipe, eroding underneath the pipe, the pipe settling, and then kinda undermining the footing. I mean, the other thing is, another part of the load calculations would be a footing can straddle a, a section, right? You, you can actually run a footing over, uh, you know, some sort of a whatever underneath it, a channel, a gap, whatever you wanna call it. So again, I am not an engineer, so I don't wanna get too deep into the weeds on these things.
You just said more than ninety.
Yeah, I, I just, um, I, I think that there are means for him to be able to have his architect, um, address some of the issues that the engineers have without potentially him having to kinda recreate the wheel. Alright, so let's have your architect kinda maybe reach out to the town engineer. Either you or your architect can reach Deborah here in town hall get them talking as to what would make him comfortable, that would make us comfortable and allowing him to do what he can do.
Okay.
Cuz, yeah, it, it's not like this is a four inch plastic pipe. Uh, it would be a very different conversation if it was a four inch plastic. I, I, but my, my only concern though is, he says fifteen inch pipe.
It's a fifteen inch double wall.
That, how much water is coming out the, cuz, so I hear what you're saying about undermining, but if there's that much water that you have this huge catch basin, precast catch basin, and you have a fifteen inch pipe, that the ground's gotta be saturated and there's still, it's back to the point that I think Sean is making, still the potential for seepage and runage along the pipe channel. But I, I don't know if it's a fifteen inch pipe because.
Somebody sold you a fifteen inch pipe?
Right, uh, yeah, that's, yeah, I mean, I don't, I just, cuz you're right, you wouldn't expect something that big, I don't know why it's that big, so.
Yeah.
So I think.
Fifteen inches, that's massive.
Yeah, so I think.
Yeah, because when you, when you, when you, when I first bought the po- with the property, there was a hole there and it was just water, it was like a little, like, like a, like water was just coming like a, underground, it was like a little water that was, that was trickling there, so I didn't think it was anything on it, but the ground was always, um, the ground was always soft, so when they put this pipe in and they, they put gravel all the way around the catch basin, and the catch basin had holes within itself, the ground was dry, never had any issues, the guys was like, if you have, he was like, I, I dealt with this, he said, the guy that was building his house, we went through all these things with the water and then after that I said, okay, so why you guys didn't do this from the beginning? He was like, oh, because, you know, the previous owner, they didn't wanna cut the trees and they didn't wanna, they just wanted to leave everything the way it was. So being the fact that you wanted more yard a little bit, so this is what it was, and, um, now the ground was dry and I had no issues.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious, why fifteen inches?
No, because I told them that I wanted to do a garage, I told Precast that, cuz when I saw the house.
Yeah, but you still could've done a six inch pipe and do a garage if it's.
Well, they didn't know, they ran into the same issue, like, hey, if you're gonna do it, you're gonna put a garage above it, we wanna go big, and that's what they, the guys from Precast gave me, and they said, we're gonna give you the stuff that we put underneath the ironies that. And you needed all this piping and all that, that's, that's a whole different ballgame, and he said, these are, you know. Um, so they were kinda just dismissing me, just like, hey, this is too small of a job.
It, it, it probably is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I was thinking about reviving the pipe, cause that would be easier for me, but when I looked at it, I have a huge boulder on the side of the house. And I can't go to this side, cause the houses are right there, so the only side I can go is, is forward to the left, but you have this humongous boulder. Which sits there and i- i- it doesn't, it's not feasible, cause I, I, I looked at it and I saw them digging up the ground.
And, and you can't put, uh, not suggesting you do this, but a, a larger dry well or something in there and get that much water that you need to. Coming off that mountain, yeah, on a heavy rain day, that's probably a lot.
I, I haven't seen it.
Yeah, I haven't seen it either.
Yeah, I go back there, it's, 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 it's a lot, it's, it's a lot, it's like, uh, it's swamp land, she, even my neighbors, these, uh, I was just speaking to them. That water is, is, is a lot, so when I looked at it and I saw the mountain water there, it was flooding.
Is she getting the water, Chuck?
Yeah, the water goes in back of their property, it's, it's like all, it's like fair reserve land, it's like all, um, swamp land. And that water comes, it just over, it was just overtopping my, 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 my yard. They didn't really receive it, because they said, hi, my house is the lowest house in that, in that credit there. And I sit at the lowest point, so I didn't have any choice.
Yeah.
So that's why I went over and beyond.
Chris, if, with the load calculations, how does that change the part about? I am obviously not an engineer, so loosening the soil, they said?
So, I mean. It's four feet deep, right, which means it's below frost requirements. Um. It's, I would assume, and this is an assumption. That at four feet deep, it was put on virgin soil as a footing would be. Um. The water is captured by the catch basin. So it's not like this is some sort of perforated pipe and water's gonna be kinda traveling through it and may erode underneath it as time goes on. It, it's being caught into a big drain and then run out. So the water is not getting in around the pipe and getting underneath the pipe and then getting an alternate means. Um, of egress, which I think was one of the things that they were concerned about, right? Water getting underneath the pipe, eroding underneath the pipe, the pipe settling. And then kinda undermining the footing, I mean, the other thing is, another part of the load calculations would be. A footing can straddle. Um, a, a section, right? You, you can actually run a footing over, uh, you know, some sort of a, whatever underneath it, a channel, a gap, whatever you wanna call it. Um, so again, I am not an engineer, so I don't wanna get too deep into the weeds on these things.
You just said more than ninety.
Yeah, I, I just, um. I, I think that there are means for him to be able to have his architect, um. Address some of the issues that the engineers have without potentially him having to kinda recreate the wheel.
Alright, so let's have your architect kinda maybe reach out to the town engineer. Either you or your architect can reach Deborah here in town hall and.
Okay.
Get them talking as to what would make him comfortable, that would make us comfortable and allowing him to do what he can give me the bill.
Okay.
Cause yeah, it, it's not like this is a four inch plastic pipe. Uh, it would be a very different conversation if it was a four inch plastic.
I, I, but my, my only concern though is, you said it's a fifteen inch pipe?
It's a fifteen inch double wall.
How much water is coming off the, cause, so I hear what you're saying about undermining, but if there's that much water that you have this huge. Catch basin, Precast catch basin, and you have a fifteen inch pipe. That the ground's gotta be saturated and there's still, is back to the point that I think Sean is making, still the potential for seepage and drainage. Along the pipe channel, but I, I don't know if it's a fifteen inch pipe, because.
Somebody sold you a fifteen inch pipe.
Right, I, that's, yeah, I mean, I don't, I just, cause you're right, you wouldn't expect something that big, I don't know why it's that big, so.
So I think.
Fifteen inch, that's massive.
Yeah, so I think.
Yeah, because when you, when you, when you, when I first bought the po- with the property, there was a hole there and it was just water, it was like a little. Like, like a, like water was just coming like a, un- underground, it was like a little water that was, that was trickling there, so I didn't think it was anything of it. But the ground was always, um, the ground was always soft, so when they put this pipe in. And they, they put gravel all the way around the catch basin, the catch basin had holes within itself. The ground was rotten, never had any issues, the guys was like, if you have, he was like, I, I dealt with this, he said, the guy that was building this house. We went through all these things with the water and then after that I said, okay, so why you guys didn't do this from the beginning? He was like, oh, because, you know, the previous owner, they didn't wanna cut the trees and they didn't wanna, they just wanted to leave everything the way it was. So being the fact that you wanted more yard a little bit, so this is what it was and, um, now the ground was dry and I have no issues.
Yeah, I'm just curious, why fifteen inches?
No, because I told them that I wanted to do a garage, I told Precast that, cause when I sold that house.
Yeah, but you still could have done a six inch pipe and do a garage if it's.
Well, they didn't know, they ran into the same issue, like, hey, if you're gonna do it, you're gonna put a garage above it, we wanna go big, and that's what they, the guys from Precast gave me. And they said, we're gonna give you the stuff that we put underneath five ways that eighteen wheeler's drive overhead at, so.
Yeah, I, I just feel like.
It was overkill.
A six inch pipe would've worked, he could've put a sleeve in the frost wall and, yeah, he died.
Yeah, no, I don't, I know, that's why it's like, didn't need it, or, or was he sold it?
Right.
You know, I, I don't know. Um.
I told him I don't want no issues or anything like that, and he said, oh, here's a fifteen inch pipe, there you go, here's a concrete basin, he said, and, and they just. Different water.
What's going on?
Probably I don't drink coffee, or if you wanna get rid of mine.
Okay. Um, um, alright, well, we, we have stuff that we can take.
Yeah.
Um. Any, it's, it's, while we're here, so let, let's, let's pretend the pipe doesn't exist for a moment. Let's, let's talk about the project itself, what, what are we, what are we looking to do and, uh, again, we're not gonna make any decisions, but we're here, we're all together. So let's talk about what you're proposing here.
Oh, so I'm just, uh, I'm proposing an addition, uh, for, um, wheelchair accessible bathroom downstairs. Um, mom is, uh, has ambulatory issues. Um, so I need to make downstairs real flat, she can't go up the steps, and the bathroom downstairs is really small. So just to give me enough room upstairs and give her enough room in the bathroom, I just wanted to propose an addition, so she can. Put a chair, an actual chair in the, in the, in the, in the bathtub, in a, in a walk-in shower and have enough room to take a, take a shower. So when I looked at everything, instead of going out and not going upstairs with my addition, he said, if you're gonna do that much work, you might as well just go up also. Cause it's gonna cost you almost the same, and I said, okay, and that was the proposed addition.
So you also have, it looks like some deck work?
Yeah, so the deck will have to be, um, the deck will have to be torn down and pushed back a little bit. Um, uh, for this to, for this to happen.
Alright, so it's, uh, it's a garage and basically living addition. Right?
Yeah.
And. In terms of.
Deck, and then there's a set, so garage.
And do you have any concerns or issues?
Um. Two, I, it sounds like Mr. Bella's air did his due diligence in order to make sure that the water drained properly. However, since his move in and since construction has begun. The water behind our home has actually, the water levels have continued to rise during our rainy spring seasons. Whereas previously, it would drain through the pipe between outer properties and out into the street and into the sewer drainage. On the street, while our house is actually built pretty high up, it is unaffected, it is, um. An eyesore, and also I do believe that I tend to get more mosquito bites when that does happen. And it does sound princessy, however, I think that is a, a real human.
Standing, standing water creates, yeah, right.
And so perhaps, I don't know how to do this formally, a request to have someone from the town just check that area out. To see if we could get the water levels, um, lower behind our home, it is not all our property, I think some of it. Belongs to the government itself, however, I also think that if the water is lowered behind our home. It would actually help Mr. Bella's air out a little bit more as well in terms of having water in his yard, because his property is lower. Um, is, is there anything else that I should have covered in that first topic? And then within the second topic, in terms of the additions that Mr. Bella's air is adding. I just wanted to make sure that it's all within, I'm sure that the zoning board actually has it all under control. That it's all within the property lines as well as, is it a, we've experienced this before as well, but like, um. Is it the rule that it's ten feet within the property line that things are built and added on to?
So, so, so first of all, it is within the property line, it's not going into anyone's property. But the, the issue that we really look at here is what we call setbacks, how far from the property line. That's the issue, so first of all, the lot is what we call non-conforming. So the house is built before we had current zoning codes. And so if you, you couldn't build his house on this lot, because it would be non-conforming, so. If you were to look at the code today, it doesn't meet the code requirements in terms of setbacks, probably your house is the same concern. So the question that we will make as a board, assuming we get the draining issue addressed, is. Are the. The reduction in the setback, something that is reasonable. And the minimum requirement in order for him to complete the project. So, to your point, things will be closer to the property line. Um, but as the house exists right now, everything's closer than the property line than it should be. So the question is, how much closer and is that reasonable? So, you know, I don't have the numbers.
One is, the garage will be eighteen feet away from the property line, and on the other side of the house, existing. Um, is nineteen point six feet.
Right, so, so right now, it's probably, I don't know, thirty, forty feet.
I'd say a forty, forty-two and then it's proposed as well.
Right, so it's gonna be, say, twenty foot closer to the property on one side and probably, there will, there's no change on the other side. All there is is a little addition, um, so we will, we will determine if that movement. Closer to the property line is reasonable, um, and there's actually a five-part test, does it impact the character of the community? Is it self-created, uh, does it change the character of the neighborhood, et cetera? Um, but that's part of the process we go through, uh, but right now, it's, it's non-conforming and I would suspect. Your house is probably the same way, uh, but it won't be on the property line and it won't be over the property line, that's for sure. So, so one of the things we, we ask from the public is if you are concerned. That, that eighteen, twenty feet is too close, you know. We, we have the ability to put conditions on it, so say it was so egregious. You wanted it covered and say, you know, I can agree with this, or I won't give my neighbor a hard time, but can you put some plannings around? The addition, so we don't stare into the front window of your addition, so we do stuff like that too, if. The neighbors have significant concerns, I don't know how far your house is from the property lines, I'm gonna assume it's probably at least twenty feet. So you're probably still at least forty feet away from his addition, if you're on the, the, the side where the addition's going to be. Okay, are you, do you know which side are they on?
Yeah, they're, they're.
The garage side?
Garage side or the other?
The garage side.
Okay.
Like, up on this, like, mountain there.
Okay. Yeah.
Sounds great, I think it's just, um, the water to ease.
Yeah.
And I spray, I also spray, um, I don't know if you saw me last semester, uh, last summer, I spray for mosquitoes. Uh, I don't only spray my yard, I spray the neighbor's yard, and I spray all the way back there. Um, if you notice the summer prior before, there was like no mosquitoes, cause I was getting torn up. And, and I was like, I, I just, you know, I brought a stowed backpack and I pretty much irrigated the whole backyard. And people, neighbors and stuff like that, but I let them know that I was spraying.
If you have standing water, they sell dunks at tall people.
Yeah, I put that in.
Stuff like that.
You guys are above him?
We're the fifty-five.
There's your, no, I mean, like, your uphill?
Yes, we are.
Uh, this would impact uphill.
Usually uphill impacts down.
Yeah, right, I, I'm, I'm not sure I can see the construction impacting.
Them at all, yeah.
You, because water should be flowing down to, uh, Mr. Bella's air's property.
The home is uphill, there is some land that is actually level.
Water at the bottom, okay, okay.
And not all of the land is ours, I think some of it.
Parkland.
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't know putting that pipe in the ground was gonna be, I, I was really trying to just.
No, I, you were clearly trying to do the right thing.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's, yeah.
Think anyone's gonna dispute that?
And I, and I saw guidance from the previous town inspector, I did see guidance from the town, see how I can do it the right way. And this was the way that, you know, collectively, the highway department guy came out and he's the one that told me about Precast and. You know, and I looked at the excavation guy, he was like, hey, that's overkill, I was just gonna put some, you know, some corrugated pipes and everything and just dry out the yard. But, you know, if that's what you wanna go with, I said, listen, I'm going with a garage over this thing, I'm gonna go overkill, I'm gonna make sure that nothing is, is happening, and they said, okay.
I have a word with the highway superintendent.
Yeah, maybe you can.
You know money about her?
I have some money. Um, do you guys have any other questions right now regarding the addition?
I don't. Not, no, I do not.
Yeah, I don't think I do.
So, I mean, the garage is the only thing I think.
That.
For me.
Variance? No, the whole, well, first of all, it's a non-conforming lot, so we would do, we'll correct everything, but, um. On the, what I'll call the south end of the property, it looks like there's, um, some addition. That will have to be, um, possibly have a variance as well.
Yeah, so they need a variance in the minimum lot area, the minimum lot with the minimum side yard setback on the north, which is the new garage side. Subback on the south, which is existing where the little residential, um, addition is happening. And then you have the minimum setback for both side yards total, the maximum development coverage and the minimum street frontage. Uh, if you look at the plan that was submitted, it gives you a little pie shape in the middle, that's the.
Yeah, the setback, the setback line, yeah. Yeah, but also on top of, uh, that box on top there shows all of the. Yeah, I mean, fu- fundamentally, this is pretty standard there, so I, 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 I don't have any, I don't know if you do, Russ? Any other questions for now?
No, no.
Alright.
Worst case scenario, would it be like if I was to reduce, um. The garage culture to the house, just to have a place to put my monorail and tools? To, 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 to avoid, um, to avoid any further delays or anything like that? Um, if worst case scenario was to happen, just to, just instead of going way over to that side of that, where the garage, like, maybe fifteen feet wide. And just, uh, maybe like twenty feet and like, like not going over the pipe just to, uh.
That's, that's another option.
Yeah, you'll still need the variance.
Still need the variance, but, but, yeah, but the issue, truthfully, the issue isn't really as much the variances. This is standard, we've, we've done work and people have come from Flintwood with similar requests and, you know. So I, you know, fundamentally, what's suggested here is not really an issue, just to make sure the setbacks are reasonable. It's, it's the pipe, now if you wanted to change that garage, so it doesn't go over the pipe. You, you, you still would have to put new drawings out there, but that would literally, I, I, I don't wanna say signed, sealed and delivered. But it, it, I think that erases our one big concern.
I, I would just, if. Your architect talks to the engineer and there's probably a chance that they can just work through.
Yeah, I'm just hoping the vacation's good, cause she has it very hard, uh, she's, she's, she's Latin, she's from Latin America, so her, her Spanish is very. Her accent is very, it's very adept, so I'm hoping that she'll be able to speak the language and get on a sync page.
They'll be good, he can understand. But also, it, that, it's shrinking the garage is something that you're thinking of when you're talking to her, just also make sure that. Whatever it goes down to, that doesn't touch the pipe, still works for whatever you need, I don't have the size, I don't know how wide it was.
It's really not, but I just wanted to just avoid like, you know, just to.
Go, go through the process here, right, before you do that.
Okay.
Go through this process and see, and, and, and if, you know. Everything checks out with that, then proceed here.
Got you.
That, that would be my recommendation. Shouldn't necessarily be giving them, but, um, yeah, I think that would probably be the best way to go.
So I'll just have the architect just call the engineer and have them communicate on what's going on.
Yeah, re- reach out to Deborah and, and we'll get, we can work that all out between everybody. Alright.
So your next meeting then is June twenty-seventh.
Alright, any other questions, gentlemen?
Uh, none for me, no.
Alright, um, you have no other questions, any other comments from the public?
Any update?
Alright, I'll, um, make a motion to adjourn the public hearing to June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, at seven P M. Seconded by Russ, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, any other business we need to address? Guys, you're all set? Alright, uh, motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Aye. Very good, alright, thank you all.